Good morning. Please take your seats if you can find one. This meeting is being viewed, able to be viewed livestream on SCPS website. It's also being recorded. Member Calderon, please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
It would be my honor if you'd all rise with me.
To the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual for liberty and justice for all.
Please settle down so we can conduct our meeting. Let the record reflect that all five school board members, school board attorneys, superintendent are present. Superintendent, do you have any agenda modifications?
Yes, Madam Chair. The only modification is to move the Agenda Item 4 up to the beginning of the meeting before public comment.
Thank you. Board members, may I have a motion to approve the agenda outline?
They're moved.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion, all in favor, signify.
A question, please.
Yes.
Two questions. Can we also move number three up above, public comment, so that we all can hear this before public comment is read? And I think, yep, sorry. Thank you. Can we, can I recommend that we also move the presentation of the judge rulings up prior to public comment? And I'm, I would like clarification on the superintendent's recommendation. Usually, we have a recommendation, not a question of us providing direction.
Thank you. Good morning. Board members, are you in agreement of moving up the presentation of the judge's ruling?
Yes.
Thank you.
Fine.
And then we will get a clarification. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and read the civility statement right now, please. As this meeting commences, please be advised that it is the expectation that every person present or who enters this assembly will conduct themselves with civility, courtesy, and restraint. This meeting will be conducted pursuant to the district policies and procedures as they relate to order and decorum. Disruptive behavior and actions are counterproductive to the advancement of pertinent district business. Therefore, each individual is warned that failure to conduct oneself with civility and propriety may result in removal. We thank you in advance for everyone's adherence and cooperation. Thank you. Okay, so. All in favor of the approval of the agenda outline signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any oppose? If you pass, thank you. Ms. Beaman?
Yes, and just to address the question regarding the superintendent's recommendation, the, this meeting was called at the request of the chair. There are three ways in which a special meeting can be called. One is by the, by the request of the chair. The superintendent did not have a recommendation asked to this meeting, and so the recommendation that was included because of the agenda outline is that the board provide direction after receiving the information to the superintendent.
Okay, thank you.
And board members, in order to assist your discussion today, a few members of the medical community, along with Amy Elwood, our Director of Intervention Services, is here to provide information and answer any questions you might have. So I will turn it over to her for introduction of Dr. Khadijah, Donna Walsh, and Kevin Baker.
Good morning, Superintendent and school board members. I would like to introduce who is participating on our panel this morning. We have Dr. Adriana Khadijah from the Division of Infectious Diseases, Department of Pediatrics at Nemours Children's Health, joining us today, along with Donna Walsh, our Health Officer at Florida Department of Health Seminole, and her team, Kevin Baker, the Epidemiology Program Manager, and Gigi Riven-Danera, the School Health Manager from Florida Department of Health Seminole. I am going to turn it over to Dr. Khadijah first to start the presentation.
Board members, we ask that you keep your, your questions until the end of their presentation, because many of them may be answered during the presentation. Thank you.
Okay. Can you see my presentation and hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. All right, well, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak here today and give you some updates. Seminole County is special to me. I like to say this often. I am a graduate from Seminole County Elementary, Middle, and High School, and so thank you for the invite. I'm very happy to be here and hopefully help make some good decision making. I always, I, I am a data-driven person, and I like to start out by talking about the magnitude of what school boards are facing. So Florida public schools have almost 2.8 million students enrolled, at least they did last year, with 67 school districts in the state and having five of the 10 largest school districts in the United States. Here is where Seminole County lies in relation to sizes, and so you see it's right around the middle with about 66,681 students that your board is responsible for, at least for the year 2020 to 2021. The goal of everyone here, school board members, community, staff, pediatricians, medical healthcare personnel, is to keep schools open, keep children safe, keep teachers and staff safe. It's unfortunately not new. This is a newspaper article from 1918 discussing the influence of pandemic closing schools, churches, and theaters. And so last year, what we were able to do was use some of the known ways to prevent the transmission of certain viruses, including SARS-CoV-2, in the school systems. We used things that were used in the hospital settings, and they were then transitioned to be effective in the school setting, such things as social distancing, hand washing, masking, and contact tracing. Always remembering that layering is important, because each layer alone is not perfect. Other things that were then instituted included ventilation improvements, screening, deep cleaning of the facilities, improved testing. At the beginning of the pandemic, it was extremely difficult to have children tested. Today, that is no longer the case, although with the increase in the number of cases, we are starting to become strained in testing, and there is a shortage. Also, the isolation of infected persons, quarantining exposed persons, and also limiting, canceling, or altering high-risk activities in order to decrease transmission of this highly transmissible virus. Something also that was very effective was the innovation of new models in school systems. The learning environment in Florida for fall of 2020 began with about 54% of students going face-to-face, and only about 40, and 43% of students using this new innovative model. It did change a little towards the spring of 2021, where more students became face-to-face students, with about 67% attending face-to-face, and 30% of students continuing this innovative model in average for Florida. Seminole County was a little different in the, in the fall. They did start similar to what the trend was in the state of Florida, with about 59% of students going face-to-face, whereas it was 54%, 54% in Florida. And in spring, however, there was a larger number of students attending face-to-face, with about 77%. And remember that in the state, it was about 67% going face-to-face. And this is what happened throughout the year. This is a graph from what the Department of Health gives us. It's only showing us the positive weekly count, and people vaccinated ages 12 and over, so we're not representing here students under the age of 12 having positive cases, because this is just information that is distributed by the Department of Health and available. But you see that we had a high number of cases, and then as vaccination numbers took up, we saw this beautiful decline in the number of cases. And towards the end there, you see the end of the school year, that graph with the number of vaccinated persons kind of plateaued, but the number of case counts significantly improved, and it was nice and low. Schools are a reflection of the community. This is not Seminole County, this is Orange County. I was able to take a snapshot on February 8th of the number of cases that they had reported on a daily basis in September 22nd up to that date between employees and students. The students are in the dark blue, and below it, our hospital system had been keeping track of daily confirmed cases in each county, and so I was able to align the dates so that I can show you how we, why we say that schools are a reflection of the community. In Orange County, at the bottom, you can see that when community peaks, you can see peaks as well on the top graph, which is the student and staff cases. Again, as vaccination improved towards the end of the school year, we were feeling much better about the outlook of this pandemic. And then Florida Summer 2021. And yes, it's not just Florida, it's just that Florida led the nation. The coronavirus Delta variant took over, with increased rates of transmission becoming a game changer. Here you see the R naught, so the Delta variant is more contagious. When you look at the R naught, which is the reproductive number, this is the number of people that one sick person will infect on average. That original strain of COVID-19, on average, would infect up to three people per person. If I was infected, I would infect three people likely, and then each of those three people would infect up to three people on their own. This new Delta variant has an R naught of somewhere between five to seven, is estimated. So let's say seven persons. If I'm infected, I can infect seven persons. Those seven persons will then go on and infect another seven. And you can see why this Delta variant is more contagious and has spread the way that it has. And that is seen here, again, on the Department of Health graph, where you see that beginning in July, you see the increase in the number of cases in, by weeks. And you also notice that the number of people vaccinated pretty much plateaued. And in July, July 9th, to be exact, the CDC published their updated guidance for COVID-19 prevention in K through 12 schools. It did talk about the fact that we know that students benefit from in-person learning, and we want to provide schools with safe return-to-school guidance. Vaccination was the leading strategy, and also point number three, that masks should be worn indoors by all individuals who are not fully vaccinated. This was consistent with their guidance from May, when we were seeing improved vaccination rates and decrease in rate of disease. However, shortly thereafter, it had to be updated with this new Delta variant, and so the CDC updated its guidance and recommended universal indoor masking for all teachers, staff, students, and visitors of K through 12 schools regardless of vaccination status. If the community transmission is high and community vaccination level is low, students and staff are more likely to come to school while infectious and introduce the SARS-CoV-2 into the school. Again, the majority of cases that are acquired in the community and brought into the school setting can result with limited spread when multiple layers of prevention strategies are in place, including universal masking. This is an MMWR report, actually focusing on Florida schools reopening between August and December of 2020. It shows that there was a higher mean student case rate reported in counties that had lowest population, districts that had opened schools earlier during August 10 to the 14th, and districts that did not mandate mask use in their opening plan. The lower student case rates were seen in the larger counties, districts that opened a little later, so after August 16th, and those that had mask mandates. But again, the background cumulative disease incidence during the time period of August 10th to December 21st in each county was positively correlated with the incidence among students. The proportion of students by district attending full-time person instruction also related with the student case rate. Again, schools are a reflection of the community. And so in all, the guidance from the CDC asks for staying home when sick and get tested, continued cleaning and disinfection, improved ventilation, hand washing and respiratory etiquette, continued screening, testing, contact tracing, with isolation and quarantine as needed, the promotion of vaccination, physical distancing, and the consistent and correct continued mask usage. In the science brief that was also updated July 9th, 2021, is where you find all of the data that was reviewed by the CDC in order to come up with these recommendations. These are all strict, intensely reviewed and used to make guidance. These are some of the articles that are referenced supporting the mask use. Again, most studies show success in limiting transmission in schools with mask use, and there were few reports noting that inconsistent mask use may have contributed to some of those school-based outbreaks that have been reported. When looking at papers that may speak to otherwise, make note that a lot may be withdrawn, retracted, and not true. Science makes for good recommendations. We make adjustments based on our reliable and reproducible research. Shortly thereafter, the American Academy of Pediatrics on July 18, 2021, released their guidance for returning safely to schools. The American Academy of Pediatrics is made up of over 67,000 pediatricians, and we are committed to the optimal physical, mental, and social health and well-being of all infants, children, adolescents, and young adults. What the American Academy of Pediatrics has done is put this out in order to support communities, leadership, and pediatricians create safe policies. Please note that they emphasize that everything possible must be done to keep students in school in person. They promote equitable access to all children. They emphasize using science and data to make decisions, and also note that school transmission reflects, again, it does not drive, but it reflects community transmission. So it is important for communities to take appropriate measures to decrease community spread in order to keep schools open and safe. The implementation for safe return to school per the American Academy of Pediatrics has multiple things that could be performed. These interventions include vaccination of all those that are eligible, continued testing, access to testing, updated policies that are based on your local transmission and positive rate. This requires coordination with your local Department of Health and medical community. They recommend a multi-pronged layered approach to protect students, teachers, and staff, also recommend monitor attendance, and face masks should be used in all school staff, students who are over the age of two years regardless of vaccination status. Also, again, they should, they emphasize that school districts should communicate with the Department of Health and local community experts. Policies should look to create safe working environments for educators, staff, and support overall health and well-being of all children, with ongoing federal, state, and local funding to continue mitigation strategies to continue safe school attendance. Just last week, the Children's Hospital Association signed this letter. The Children's Hospital Association has more than 220 children's hospitals in its network, and this letter was released stating that children's hospitals are seeing increased volume, many to capacity, due to the rise in COVID-19 infections in children, along with other respiratory illnesses. These numbers, coupled with a decreased workforce, puts hospitals at an unprecedented threat. They are calling on leaders in the public and private sectors and the American public to stand together and protect our children. The steps that we're asking for are for people to get vaccinated if eligible, mask responsibly, including during schools and while attending large gatherings, and to continue social distancing and hand washing methods. This is another announcement from the Children's Hospital Association, published September 1st just yesterday. This is noting how the COVID pandemic has led to a steep, deep, led to a steep decline in respiratory visits in the year 2020 due to the mitigation efforts. However, as these have now loosened, there is an, there is an unpredictable off-season surge of multiple viruses, including RSV, along with an increasingly burned-out staff members on hand to take care of the influx of patients. Specifically in our region, the southeastern region, we are seeing an increase in COVID-19, RSV, rhinovirus, and enterovirus. Coupled with increased emergency department visit volumes, increased inpatient acuity, most ICUs are at capacities. There are shortages in travel nurses and high rates of nursing turnover within our region. A third announcement from the Children's Hospital Association from August 31st, asking the White House, Congress, and the American people to support children's hospitals as the perfect storm hits. The increased number of COVID-19 cases with increased hospitalizations and the expected increased demand for mental health services now that schools are returning, the Children's Health or Safety Net is under unprecedented strength. Children's hospitals and their staff are doing their part. Now they're asking the American public, the White House, and Congress for help. They're asking the government to provide, provide a relief funding, and for all to adhere to the proven practices of social distancing, hand washing, and masking responsibly in order to better protect our children. Regarding hospitalization of children with COVID-19, data is difficult to come by. Not everyone is reporting it in a way that can easily be synthesized. The American Academy of Pediatrics publishes a state-level report every few weeks. It was last updated August 26, 2021. There are 24 states and New York City that are reporting in a way that they can synthesize and analyze this data. From those states, children range, range between 1.6 and 3.6% of total cumulative hospitalizations, and 0.1 to 1.9% of all the childhood COVID-19 cases resulted in hospitalization. Florida has almost four, or a little over 4.8 million children under the age of 20. As of August 26, 2021, 562,215 children have been infected with COVID-19. Doing some mathematics, if all of Florida's children become infected at some point during the pandemic, and we say 0.1% of those children are hospitalized, this will lead to about 4,800 children hospitalized with COVID-19 during the pandemic. If you use the higher range of 1.9% of children hospitalized-
Please hold down the conversation.
Thank you.
Almost 92,000 children hospitalized during the pandemic. Yes, this is stating that all children will become infected. You can do math, and if it's 50%, a quarter, you could do according. Looking specifically at Seminole County public schools, there are about 66,500 kids enrolled in schools. Looking at the lower range, if 0.1% of these children are hospitalized, it's about 66 of Seminole County public school children will be hospitalized during the pandemic. If it's a higher range, you can see up to 1,200 children. If only a quarter of Seminole County public school children become infected, that's about 16,600 children, you will see somewhere between 16 and 315 of the Seminole County public school children require hospitalization during the pandemic. This is a graph that was presented as part of the move for the need of vaccination in adolescents. This is presented during the summer. This shows the cumulative influenza and COVID-19 hospitalization rates among adolescents 12 to 17 years of age. The yellow shows COVID-19, and you can see below it, the blue is the 2009, 2010 H1N1 flu season, followed by the other flu season. This is highlighting a recent outbreak in elementary school with the Delta variant. There was an unvaccinated teacher who became symptomatic May 19th with nasal congestion and fatigue. She was still working until developed cough, subjective fever, and headache, and so stopped working on May 21st after being tested. It was noted that she would occasionally unmask and read aloud to her class. Between May 23rd and May 26th, 22 students were tested and 12 were positive. The attack rate in the rows closest to the teacher's desk was 80%, so eight out of 10 students tested positive, and it was 28% in the back rows. During May 24th to June 1st, there were other six of 18 students in separate grade levels who also tested positive, and there were an additional eight cases in parents and siblings of students in these grades. Highlighting that the Delta variant spreads easily in indoor spaces when people are unmasked and unvaccinated. Another recent MMWR showing an outbreak at a youth, and, we, youth camp and men's conference, a five-day overnight church camp for children 14 to 18 occurred with 294 attendees and 41 staff members. This was followed by a two-day men's conference with 500 attendees and 30 staff members. The second to last day of camp, one camper left after becoming symptomatic with fever and respiratory symptoms, later confirmed to be COVID-19. Campers and staff members were encouraged to test, and six staff members were positive but attended the men's conference as they were asymptomatic at the time and did not get the results until later on. As of August 14th, 180 confirmed and probable cases among attendees and close contacts have been detected, with 122 primary cases and an attack rate of 26%. 13 required ED visits, five were hospitalized, and none of those that were hospitalized were vaccinated. There were 29 infections in fully vaccinated persons. This MMWR also recently highlighting myocarditis association with COVID-19. Myocarditis is an inflammation of the heart muscle which can lead to heart failure and death. Data has suggested that there is an association between COVID-19 and myocarditis, also has been reported with vaccination. The CDC assessed this association using a large hospital-based administrative database with encounters from over 900 hospitals, and what they found was that there was an increase in 2020 compared with 2020, with 2019. Myocarditis inpatient encounters were 42.3% higher in 2020 than in 2019, and although still uncommon after adjusting for patient and hospital characteristics, patients that were diagnosed with COVID-19 had an average of 15.7 times the risk for myocarditis compared with those that did not have COVID-19. It was higher in the pediatric population where patients under 16 years of age who were diagnosed with COVID had a 36.8 times risk, and those 16 to 24, 7.4 times the risk of those that were not infected with COVID-19. I figured it was a good place to put in here that the American Academy of Pediatrics has updated their guidance- has updated their guidance on their return to schools and physical activities. This was updated August 2nd, 2021. Patients that are asymptomatic or mildly symptomatic should be screened at least 10 days after tested positive and they have recovered. Those that are under 12 years of age may progress to sports as tolerated, and those that are under 12 years of age should return in a gradual manner, at least over a seven-day period, if they have no symptoms of suggested cardiac issues. Moderate symptoms should have an in-person evaluation by the pediatrician, including a full exam, screening questions, and an EKG. If any of these are positive, they should have a cardiology referral. If there's a negative, they can return to sports and activity as stated above. However, students that have severe infection or those that had the multi-system inflammatory syndrome should be restricted from school, from sports, or physical activities for a minimum of three to six months, and should obtain cardiac evaluation prior to coming back to training or competition. Now, as far as what's going on locally within our healthcare system, we were able to pull this data. This comes from our electronic medical record data pool, so we have not gone and done data chart review, but I feel that this is telling. If you look here, this is in blue the number of COVID tests performed, and red you see the number of positive COVID tests. The number of tests being performed has significantly increased in the last month compared to where we were previous, beginning January 1st, 2021, and you can also see an increase in the number of tests that are returning positive. The Morse Children's Healthcare System has clinics, primary care, urgent care, and our hospital located throughout Brevard, Lake Orange, Osceola, Polk, and Seminole Counties. And when you look at all the locations, so primary care, urgent care, as well as our hospital, you can see the number of positive tests in relationship to the number of total tests. August 19th, the week beginning August 19th, we tested almost 2,000 total students or children with a 15.9% positivity percentage. Back in August 5th, the week of August 5th, it was 19.9% of all tests were coming back positive. You can also see that the majority of these are students between the ages of 12 and 17, followed by 6 to 11, and last would be the 0 to 5 years of age. If you look at primary care, similarly, there's been a significant increase in the number of tests being done in all counties. Previously doing 1, 2, 300, now the week beginning August 19th, we did 660 total tests, where 14.4% of these were positive. Also, 12 to 17 years of age were predominating, followed by 6 to 11 and 0 to 5 being least When you look at urgent care settings, also a significant increase in the number of tests that are being done. Up to 530 tests were done the week of August 19th, with 15.1% of all these tests coming back positive. Within our hospital, including the emergency department and children that are admitted, on the week of August 19, 2021, we had 565 tests performed. Of these, 19.7% were positive. In our hospital, you can see that the 6 to 11-year-olds and 12 to 17-year-olds represent the majority of the positive tests most recently. Now, pertaining to Seminole County, from all of our locations, primary care, urgent care, and the hospital using VIN codes, we were able to do this table where in August, the week of August 19th, approximately 209 tests were performed, and of these, 15.3% were positive. You can see the number of tests also has increased as well as positives. And in Seminole County, it appears that those 11, sorry, 6 to 11 years of age accounted for the majority of positive tests, followed by 12 to 17-year-olds, and last 0 to 5-years-old. As far as admissions, again, this is just being pulled from our electronic medical record. We have not done a chart review. What we have seen is the number of admissions increased significantly, where in the beginning of the year, every week, we had between one and five patients admitted. The week of August 19th, we had a total of 16 different children admitted to our hospital due to COVID-19. Since the end of July, our numbers have been steadily increased and persistently high. And that will conclude my presentation. Thank you for-
Order, order. Order, please. Thank you, Dr. Kadia. Order, please, if you'd like to remain in the room. Five-minute recess, board members. Five-minute recess. Thank you. Order, order.
I would caution everyone-
Five-minute recess.
-to be quiet as the chair is addressing the matter.
Please come to order, Ms. Elwood. Good morning.
Thank you so much. At this time, I'd like to ask Donna Walsh and Kevin Baker to go forward with their presentations.
Thank you, Ms. Elwood. Good morning, everyone, and thank you for the invitation to join me this morning to review the state of the COVID-19 pandemic in the state of Florida and in Seminole County. The current state of the pandemic has recently been described as the fourth wave, you know, largely in the unvaccinated. The current daily reported cases and positivity rates that we have seen in this fourth wave have surpassed the last surge that we saw in January. We're averaging anywhere from, here in Seminole County, from 200 to 500 reported COVID cases daily versus as low as 20 cases reported in mid-June. We've also seen the positivity rate here rise above 23% at the highest level or peak, with a 17.7% positivity rate reported last Friday from our Florida Department of Health reports. These are all indicators of risk of transmission in our community, which is considered high. And so, you know, we were looking at positivity rates less than 5% in June pretty steadily, and that would have been an indicator of lower transmission. We've also seen, unfortunately, during this surge, an increase in hospitalizations, the highest reported during this pandemic response. Our local hospitals, in fact, have reported being in red or black status, and what that means is that they've had to limit visitation and elective surgeries because, you know, they have had to open up additional wings to support the COVID-19 patients and the critical care that they need within their hospital settings. Our trends in Seminole County very closely mirror what the trends that are reported weekly from the state of Florida. So what's different this year compared to last year this time? Well, there's several differences. One is that we have vaccinations available to us for those who are eligible 12 years of age and older, and they have been available since January 2021. Last year this time, that wasn't the case. We also, of course, are dealing with the Delta variant. Throughout this pandemic response, we have seen different variants reported, and globally, we've seen that the Delta variant, even before we experienced this in the United States, seems to be more infectious, highly transmissible, and appears to lead to more severe illness and hospitalizations from what we're seeing in the data. We've also seen an increase in breakthrough cases due to the more infectious Delta variant and evidence of waning immunity from vaccine, although the vaccine still seems to be very protective against severe illness and hospitalizations. And most recently, we've seen a recommendation for those who are moderately to severely immunocompromised to receive a three-dose series to enhance their immune response for protection. Also, what we've seen as a different trend since last year this time is an increase in reported cases and hospitalizations in the younger populations. And we've seen an increase in reported deaths associated with community-acquired infections more so versus those associated with nursing homes. As you all know, schools are fully reopened this year, which is very different than last year. And we've also seen further reports of long COVID syndrome in children and adults for those who have contracted the COVID disease. So as Dr. Kadia provided, you know, a comprehensive review of some things that can be done in a school setting to be most protective and provide the best health of our school communities, those include, as she already has reviewed with you, vaccinating our eligible children and adults 12 years of age and older, and making sure that-
Order, please. Order.
Order, please. And making sure that people who are around children who may not be eligible for the vaccine yet, and that's our children less than 12 years of age, are vaccinated. Also of great importance is to continue those guidance, the guidance that we have from the Centers for Disease Control and Protection of the non-pharmaceutical mitigation strategies, the facial covering, social distancing, good hygiene, respiratory etiquette that Dr. Kadia reviewed at great extent. Also different this year is, you know, the monoclonal infusion therapy that is available to folks at highest risk for severe complications from the virus. And of course, you know, making sure that we provide timely and proper testing that's approved by the FDA Emergency Use Authorization, and consult with a healthcare provider for assessment as soon as possible after showing symptoms of COVID-19. This is extremely important, you know, not to delay care. And so, at this point in time, I'm going to turn it over to our chief epidemiologist, Kevin Baker, who will provide for you some more data as to what is happening here in Seminole County with the COVID-19 pandemic.
Order, please.
Kevin, can you unmute yourself so you can start the presentation?
Okay, good morning. I'm sorry, I was having a hard time unmuting myself. Can you hear me?
We can.
All right. Good morning. Thank you, everyone, for allowing me to speak. The school board members, chair, and superintendent, attorney, thank you all very much. So, as mentioned, my name is Kevin Baker. I am the Epidemiology Program Manager for the Department of Health in Seminole County. So, looking at the national data, we wanted to share what's going on across the nation, state, and local levels. So you can see that our level of community transmission across the country really is high, and we'll get into exactly what that means in just a moment, but you can see that Florida certainly is not the only part of the country that is in this high level of transmission. And looking more specifically at Florida, again, still every area across all of our 67 counties are experiencing this increase in COVID-19 transmission. So during the week of June 4th, Seminole County's community transmission level had dropped substantially from the peak in January 2021, and we had gotten down to 45.4 cases per 100,000 population over the prior seven, or during the week of June 4th. So we had moved out of the high transmission category and had gotten to the moderate transmission level, which is 10 to 49 cases per 100,000 population over a seven-day period. By July of this year, the community transmission level began to increase dramatically back into a high transmission level. Our peak weekly cases per 100,000 population occurred during the week of August 13th at 601.5 cases per 100,000 population, which is the highest community transmission level that we have seen since the start of the COVID-19 pandemic. As of the week of August 27th, Seminole County experienced a case rate of 564.3 cases per 100,000 population over that week. So there has been a slight decrease from the peak I mentioned earlier. We are still monitoring this trend very closely to see if that level continues to decline, and we will have an updated report this Friday, and that will be publicly available on the Florida Department of Health's COVID-19 website. So similar to the previous graph, the weekly percent positivity rate in Seminole County was really low in June at 4.2%. was really low in June at 4.2%. The threshold that we want to stay under is 5%, which is indicated by the red dotted line. Our peak weekly positivity rate occurred during August 20th at 22.9%, and as of the week of August 27th, Seminole County experienced a 17.7% test positivity rate. So now we're going to look statewide at some of the pediatric age groups. So for the state of Florida, cases have steadily risen for the 0- to 11-year-old and the 12- to 19-year-old age groups. Both the weekly percent positivity and the weekly number of newly reported cases increased in both age groups since June 2021. As of the week of August 27th, 26,475 cases were reported across Florida in the 0- to 11 age group with a weekly percent positivity of 19.4%. For the 12- to 19 age group during the same week, 21,740 cases were reported across Florida with a 23.1% positivity rate. These are some of the highest case counts and positivity rates seen in these age groups since the beginning of the pandemic. COVID-19 test volume is an important indicator to understand the true incidence of COVID-19. In Seminole County, the test volume has been at the highest level that has been seen in the last several months, which goes to show that we are still seeing significant levels of COVID-19 transmission as those percent positivity rates continue to be very high. As mentioned earlier, the Delta variant has caused some significant impacts to our COVID-19 response. In the beginning of May, the predominant variant found in the South was the Alpha variant, which was formerly known as the UK variant. Over the summer, the proportion of Alpha variant diminished greatly. The Delta variant has now become the dominant variant strain across the South. The number of new COVID-19 admissions is the sum of reported new admissions for all hospitals in a county from Monday, August 9th through Sunday, August 15th. This map includes both adult and pediatric admissions. As you can see, Florida is one of the states with the highest hospital admissions during this time period. Looking specifically at Seminole County, the county had approximately 51 to 150 new hospital COVID-19 admissions from Monday, August 9th through Sunday, August 15th, 2021. COVID-19 hospitalizations have been at the highest levels we have seen for the last several months. We are starting to see a slight decrease in hospitalizations, but it is still at a much higher level than what has been reported in prior months in 2021. COVID-19-associated mortalities have increased across the state of Florida. Please note that the deaths that we confirm can take, on average, of two to three weeks to confirm, so those most recent weeks you see where there's a decrease may be underreported as of the date of this presentation and may end up being higher as we get more information to review those deaths and determine whether they are COVID-19-associated or not. Although the U.S. has at least 72.1% of adults with at least one dose of a COVID-19 vaccine, we do see vaccination rates vary widely across the country. Looking at Seminole County, 63% of Seminole County's 12-plus eligible population has received at least one dose of a COVID-19 vaccine. I'm sorry, I believe that's supposed to be 65%. So as of June 4th, 53% of the eligible Seminole County population had received at least one dose of a COVID-19 vaccine, and as of the week of August 27th, that number grew to 65% of Seminole County residents having received at least one dose of the COVID vaccine. And we are continuing to see steady levels of Seminole County residents getting vaccinated. During the week of June 4th across the state of Florida, 22% of 12- to 19-year-olds across the state were vaccinated with at least one dose of the COVID vaccine. By the week of August 27th, that had risen to 49% of 12- to 19-year-olds across Florida with at least one dose of COVID vaccine. And you can see that here. And that is all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Order, please. Order, please. Ms. Elwood?
At this time, I'd ask that you please allow the Chair to address-
Thank you. All right. So, School Board members, I know, before we get into the STPS-specific data, I know that we've had a lot of questions about local data specific to Seminole County. On PrepareSeminole.org, Office of Emergency Management does offer a local dashboard that is updated daily with a lot of specific information attached to that, so you can see a screenshot of that here. This is as of this morning, what's displayed on that dashboard on that website. I know we've had a lot of emails, a lot of comments about deaths not occurring since June. Just so you know, the difference in this dashboard from July 20th of 2021, we were sitting at 551 deaths in the county. This morning, it reflected 661. So I want to be sensitive because I know that there are people in the room who have lost loved ones this summer due to COVID, so including colleagues in our district that we have responded to. So I wanted to let you know the increase in deaths is substantial this summer. Also, we were looking at 1,651 cases in July 20th, and that has jumped to 3,261, that is active cases on the day. So you can track that daily for updates. So our COVID-19 school dashboard, I want to give some clarity as to what that represents in the way of data. That began with staff and student positive cases that are contagious on our campus as of August 2nd of this school year. To become a positive case reflected on our dashboard, this is the last step in the investigation process, so this data does lag because we want it to be accurate and we want it to be confirmed. So to be a positive case reflected on our dashboard, that person has to be confirmed to have been contagious on our campus, so they had symptoms on our campus or the test was swabbed while they were on campus that day. That swab cannot be an at-home test kit, it has to be confirmed by a doctor or by a lab in order to reflect a positive case on the dashboard. So that's total cases since August 2nd. The quarantine numbers as well reflect those staff or students that were quarantined as a result of that positive case during contact tracing. So at the schools, the active quarantines are those that were still in quarantine at the time of the update. So we did a comparison between last year and this year. We did the first three weeks of school. To be as fair as possible, we did it from the return of staff and students when they were both on campus together. While we know that the in-person learning is significantly higher this year, we did as fair a comparison as possible. So last year, we began this comparison August 17th through September 6th. This year, that would be August 10th through August 30th. So that's the comparison you're going to see here today. We broke it down by student cases here. So last year, for the first three weeks total, we had 29 positive student cases contagious on campus. This year, we've had 1,149 student cases contagious on our campus.
Order, please.
Staff cases in the first three weeks of school last year, we had 12. This year, we've had 144. These cases include staff not only on our campus, but also in our other departments because we had questions on that as well. These staff and student case numbers do not include our charter schools because we had questions by other members about that data. Student quarantines. So last year, for the first three weeks of school, we had 311. This year, we've had 6,955 students in quarantine. It is interesting to note-
Order, please.
That while we have had a significant amount of quarantines, that last year, the quarantines per case number were higher than our quarantines per case this year. Last year, we averaged just over nine people quarantined per case. This year, it is six people per case. So our schools are being very diligent in their efforts. This is an overwhelming process for our schools with the case numbers being as high as they are. They are being very diligent, being very surgical, just like last year in their contact tracing efforts, to do everything in their power to pull attendance charts, rosters, seating charts, to really look and contact trace and only exclude those students that they absolutely have to under the current guidance. We've had 64 staff quarantined last year and 112. This speaks also to the vaccination rates and those staff that are exempt either through natural immunity, from having been COVID-positive, or also from the vaccination status and exemption. We have not had to quarantine a lot of staff this year.
Order, please.
We've had some questions also about the mitigation strategies that we are taking in the school settings. So we did put together the slides that are available for the Health and Safety Guidance right now. We looked through all the CDC recommendations on prevention and mitigation measures, so consistent and correct mask usage is recommended. This is the current policy and procedures as it stands now. The mask opt-out numbers as reported to date, 10,609 or 17%. This is the breakdown by each school level. We also have hygiene protocols in the schools, and for your information, we do encourage good hygiene, hand hygiene, and we also have ample hand sanitizer available along with extra masks and extra cleaners for all facilities. We get a lot of questions about ventilation and filtration. That is recommended by both CDC and good studies to increase those opportunities. I did ask Kim Dove and her team, who has done a fantastic job on all of this process, what we have done to give us more specific information on that. They have extended HVAC schedules to increase the number of air exchanges from 4:30 a.m. to 10:30 p.m., Monday through Friday. They have installed UVC lighting in areas of high respiratory output, including the dining rooms. They are utilizing higher-efficiency filters in all locations, and those filters are changed every 45 business days. And they are utilizing air scrubbers and HEPA filtration systems in areas of high respiratory output, including band, chorus, and gymnasiums. We have also increased sanitation efforts at our school campuses. So these efforts include using hospital-grade misters to increase efficiency, and all campuses are provided additional staffing for daily disinfection. All elementary schools get an additional three hours of cleaning support. Middle schools, 4.5 hours, and high schools, eight hours. We do screen for illness. Those who are symptomatic and have symptoms of COVID-19 or under evaluation for COVID-19, have a temperature of 100.4 or higher, or diagnosed with COVID-19 are not permitted to enter the facility, staff or student. The reporting of COVID-19 cases is done in collaboration with Florida Department of Health. We also contact the custodians to help us in cleaning facilities when we identify a staff or student that tests positive. So we get a lot of questions about how we arrive at our guidance for quarantine and isolation. The Florida statutes provide the Department of Health the authority to determine the quarantine and isolation protocols for communicable diseases, so we have outlined that policy here, and we are required by statute to follow their directives for control of communicable disease spread. So when we do that, it is also good to know that after the executive order issued by the governor, there was also required in that order some emergency rulemaking that took place on August 6th that took place in coordination between the Department of Education and Department of Health, and new guidelines specific to students in K-12 settings were outlined for schools to follow for isolation and quarantine procedures, only for students. So the student guidelines for isolation and quarantine are different than staff. Staff guidelines follow still the CDC guidance, where students have multiple options for return from isolation and return from quarantine. So I've outlined those in the slides here. When we have a confirmed student COVID-19 positive case, there are three options for them to return. A student can return on day 11 after symptom onset or day 11 after the test date if asymptomatic. They can take a COVID diagnostic test and return to school if they are not displaying symptoms and provide those negative results to the school, or the student receives written permission to return to school from their medical doctor. We have the close-contact definition. Again, that is outlined by Department of Health and defined. The persons exempt from quarantine, staff and students, is also outlined by Department of Health. Those who have been previously diagnosed for COVID within the last 90 days are those persons who are fully vaccinated two weeks past final vaccination. Students who are exposed to individuals with COVID-19 have two options to return from quarantine. They can quarantine for seven full days and without testing can return on day eight, or they can quarantine and receive a diagnostic test on day five of that quarantine and come back with a negative test result if they are asymptomatic. They cannot use an at-home test kit for that. It has to be a lab-reportable test. Now, staff still uses that CDC guidance, so they can return on day 11 after the exposure if they remain asymptomatic, or they can take a PCR COVID test on day six and return on day eight. Employees that test positive for COVID-19 do not have an early release from isolation. They can only return on day 11 after symptom onset or the test date if asymptomatic. So if you have questions about that or you want to see that guidance more clearly, it is available on our website. At this time, I'd like to open it up for questions for any of our panelists.
Thank you. Board members, questions? Member Keldrum?
Thank you, Ms. Elwood, for your presentation. I got some input from families. I know it's not our determination, it's the Department of Health's determination on who and when to quarantine, but I was asked if we could perhaps submit guidance that if a student submits an antibodies test because they have had COVID and it's been longer than 90 days, but they still have antibodies, respectfully, we'd like to ask the Department of Health if they would consider that within their quarantining protocols as well.
Absolutely. We meet weekly with the Department of Health for team meetings. That question has been raised by several parents, and we have taken that to them for consideration. Please remember, too, that our local Department of Health does not set that guidance, but they do take those questions to their state meetings. I will let Donna or Kevin answer that question as to why that does not exempt currently students from quarantine.
Sure. This is Donna, and then I can let Kevin answer as well. You are correct, Ms. Elwood. We do not set locally because we're an integrated public health system here in the state of Florida. This is the rule that you're referring to. Was signed by our State Surgeon General, and that's what we have to adhere to. And the language in that rule is a bit broad, so I will- And the language in that rule is a bit broad, so I will defer to Kevin to talk about specifically the antibody test for those who are exposed versus those who are symptomatic and in isolation.
Hello. So regarding the COVID-19 antibody test, just reiterating what Donna said, that currently is not something that we do utilize. Something that CDC has basically released from the beginning is that while, yes, it can be used to potentially look at prior COVID-19 infections, it also can cross react with other types of coronaviruses. So we can't necessarily use that as
Order please.
definitive, but we can
Order please.
towards to verify.
Thank you.
Kevin? Thank you. Other questions? Member Kraus?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to ask the panelists, in their professional opinions and given the current rates of infection in central Florida and Seminole County specifically, is a mask mandate with an exemption only permitted for valid medical reasons, is that a reasonable action to help mitigate community spread of COVID?
Order.
Is that a compelling state interest? And that's for the panel.
Thank you.
Would any of the panelists care to weigh in on Ms. Kraus's answer? Or question?
They're all on mute.
Hello, this is Kevin. So the Florida Department of Health does stay within CDC guidelines in terms of embracing the recommendations to prevent the spread of COVID-19. One of those is to encourage the use of masks while indoors while we're experiencing high levels of transmission.
But this is Donna, and I would add though, that again, the Florida Department of Health
Order please.
counties follow the State Surgeon General's recommendations as outlined in the current rule. So, you know, they don't always align with the current CDC guidance, and I see Dr. Kadia may be interested in also providing a comment.
Yes, this is Dr. Kadia. My opinion is the one shared by the majority of pediatricians, physicians, who will say that universal masking is proven helpful, no side effects, it works, and especially in
Order.
setting of high transmission, it should be universal mask usage. There are few to none reasons why someone would be unable to wear a mask. So yes, I support universal mask usage, especially at this time.
Thank you.
Member Calderon?
Ms. Elwood, I think we know the answer, but as you can imagine, we've had a few thousand emails lately asking questions. So when a student presents positive with COVID and we contact trace, and then we contact families who perhaps have to quarantine after that, are those families given the name of the student that had COVID, and are they given the information that the person that caused the quarantine did or did not have a mask on?
Order. Order, please.
Absolutely not. When a family is contacted and told their child has been potentially exposed to a COVID-19 positive individual in the school setting, that is all the information they're given. What they should know is that our schools, as I said before, are doing incredible due diligence to surgically contact trace, to pull attendance and seating charts, to look at that six feet distance rule, and all of those rosters. The quarantine ratio is six students per case. So with the incredible caseload that our schools are doing, they're doing a fantastic job and should be thanked and applauded for their effort.
And we could not thank them enough. I know the hours and hours that are put in, well past midnight, seven nights a week from our administrators doing this contact tracing, their noble efforts don't go unnoticed. But I just wanted to clarify that because a lot of the emails were coming stating that, and I just wanted it made public that we do not share that information.
No, they can't give any information that could identify that COVID
Thank you.
positive individual.
Member Pennock?
In Dr. Kadia's presentation and a practice that we did last year, layering is recommended as the most effective way of mitigating transmission. Last year, we used millions of dollars of PPE for creating social distancing measures. I have not seen, and I have heard, that those measures are not being used this year. I also didn't see in any of the recommendations that those measures are being recommended. Why the change and why are we not using every kind of
Order. Order.
Oh, we all want to get through this meeting. We don't want to have this again, so please let us get through this. Thank you.
Order, please.
So why the change in the recommendation for using barriers? And why, I guess, why aren't we using them if we are saying that we're using every method to prevent the spread?
That's a great question, and thank you for asking it. Last year, when we did the reopening task force, CDC had recommended in their school opening process and guidelines, plastic barriers as one means of reducing transmission. Upon further studies and studies that were produced, what they found is that actually decreased airflow in classrooms, and so they took that down
Order, please.
a recommendation measure in their current guidelines, and so that was removed as one of our guidelines. We still allow for it as an accommodation for students if it helps them, and just like we have study carols in classrooms, so if a student needs that or a family feels for specific medical purposes that it is helpful, but we do not encourage it in a widespread fashion. As for social distancing, obviously, we are more back at full capacity. We were able to move desks further apart last year with a reduced capacity in school settings. This year, with more students in class, without going to a different type of block schedule or a hybrid A/B where students attended on different days, which is not feasible or not what we want to do. Schools aren't built for social distancing, they just aren't. We do have use of cohort groups as much as possible within elementary settings, which is recommended by CDC as a form of type of social distancing. We do have reduced capacity for certain events in indoor settings, those types of things that are recommended by CDC, but that is why they recommend a layered approach, because they recognize that school settings are not inherently built for social distancing.
Ms. Elwood, I have a question on medical exemptions. With regard to a parent wanting a medical exemption for their student, are there specific exemptions identified by us or by rule or by Department of Health? Or is there actually discretion and we can make a decision based on an individual?
Yeah, absolutely. We can make a decision based on any individual medical need and would want to make accommodations for that. I had a parent call me recently about a skin condition, for instance, and of course, we would accommodate that, and the parent was relieved to hear that. So whether that was a respiratory condition, whether it was a skin rash condition, we would want to, you know, take all of those medical conditions on an individual case-by-case basis, for sure.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions, board members? Thank you, Ms. Elwood. Thank you to the panel so very much for your time and wealth of information that you presented to us today. We appreciate it very much.
And I would like to say our panelists are welcome to stay on and listen, but I know many of them have other meetings and rounds at hospitals to do if they have to excuse themselves.
Thank you. Okay, so there's something I'd like to say to all of you, and it has to do with government and the sunshine and when we hold meetings. So none of these board members knew that we were going to have a special meeting. They did not know that I was going to request it until they got a telephone call from either the superintendent or our attorney to ask them, you know, what their availability was. I know that Ms. Sanchez needs to leave by 11:30. I don't know what the other board members have as far as commitments. The only reason we're meeting in the morning is the only time we had in common. Excuse me.
Excuse me. Sir, you're being warned. Please stop. Thank you.
The reason we're meeting in the morning is Order please. Order please. If you would like to know why I requested a special meeting, one of the items that Dr. Calderon mentioned was we've received thousands of emails. That's quite true. I apologize if you did not get a response from any of us. We did read all the emails. We had to make a decision whether we were going to read them or read some of them and respond to some of them. I know I chose to read them. I think my fellow board members probably did the same thing. I'd like to talk about the executive order that is still in place as of today. It is not my intention, it was not my intention to call this meeting to go against that executive order or law. It was, excuse me, please let me finish. My intention was for us to have a very healthy conversation, and we have not had that opportunity. Ms. Kraus asked for us to talk about this a few weeks back, or maybe a month ago. I don't recall exactly the date. At that time, the order was in place, and I didn't feel it was timely, with all due respect. When the judge ruled last week to, that, when the judge ruled last week that this was, that the governor's executive order was unconstitutional, I thought that we would have a good opportunity to have this conversation. We did not receive the written order yet, therefore the judges, therefore the executive order is still in place. Order, please. Order, please. Order, please. This is a special meeting versus an emergency meeting because it gave us an opportunity to inform you with a longer period of time, two days versus one day, and that felt like it was more important to me that you had more time to be noticed that we were going to have this meeting. Okay, board members. What I'm going to now ask the board members is probably not going to be popular, but I'm going to ask anyway. By policy, we can allow for 30 minutes of public comment, or we can allow for longer than that, based on the number of
Madam Chair, one moment if you please, point of order. If everyone can please silence their phone or completely turn them off, that'd be greatly appreciated. Please silence your phone or turn them off. Thank you. Madam Chair?
Thank you. We have more speakers than we have time allotted prior to our conversation or discussion. I would like to ask the board for your direction. We can have 30 minutes of public input right now and then continue after our discussion. How do you feel about that?
I think that's appropriate, Madam Chair, in light of board member Sanchez.
I'm fine with all public comment.
With all public comment? Okay. I'm fine with all public comment.
I'm also fine with all public comment, but we had asked. We agreed to move the presentation of the judge's ruling up before public comment, so I just wanted to make sure we
Ms. Cole Palmer, if you would address that, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. At this time, with regards to McCarthy versus DeSantis and the Department of Health, as already mentioned, on Friday of August 27th, Judge, Circuit Judge Cooper ruled that the governor exceeded his authority in issuing the executive order prohibiting districts from adopting face mask mandates. Essentially, the judge found that the governor exceeded his authority and was improperly exercising legislative authority, not executive. Judge Cooper appeared to have premised his findings on the fact that the Parent Bill of Rights is an act of the legislature. He noted that the Parents' Bill of Rights says governments, including school districts, cannot infringe on the fundamental rights of a parent to direct the upbringing, education, healthcare, mental health of his or her minor child without demonstrating that such action is reasonable and necessary to achieve a compelling state interest, and that such action is narrowly tailored and is not otherwise served by less restrictive means. It is up to the parent to challenge a local policy that is not being consistent with the reasonableness or the narrowly tailored requirements of the Parents' Bill of Rights. It is not up to the governor to predetermine whether a school district policy meets that standard and then direct enforcement actions against districts without due process. Once Judge Cooper enters the final written order, which, as noted, has still not come out yet, it is anticipated, based on his oral pronouncement, that because the Department of Health and the State Board of Education emergency rules were adopted at the direction of the executive order number 21-175, the Department of Education would be enjoined from enforcing those rules. Districts are entitled to due process as to whether their policies are a violation of the Parents' Bill of Rights. There is no injunction at this time against the governor, and the Department of Health was not actually a party to this particular case. With that said, there is no clarity at this time regarding the status of the Department of Health rule addressing facial covering masks for students in school settings. Since Judge Cooper did not find the executive order, since Judge Cooper did find that the executive order was improper, and as such, the Department of Education emergency rules were improper, in applying the reasonable person standard, one could conclude that the Department of Health rule would also be improper. Again, at this time, none of that is in effect because there is no written final order from Judge Cooper. However, because the Department of Health was not a party, Judge Cooper did not make any specific findings that I'm aware of with regards to the Department of Health rule. But by enjoining the Department of Education from enforcing emergency rules that flow from the executive order, that would arguably result in no sanctions that could be enforced against the school districts, even if there was no compliance with that Department of Health rule. At this time, we are still in obligation to comply with state regulations and rules as they apply, as the order has not been rendered by the judge.
Thank you. Welcome. Anything else? Vice Chair Pennock? With that regard, thank you. Please read the public input statement.
Public comment related to education, the board agenda and the district are welcome and encouraged. The public comment opportunity is not, however, an open forum to discuss matters unrelated to education, to support or oppose candidates for public office, or to engage in commercial speech attempting to sell a service or product to the board or the public. Also, public comment is not a forum to engage in personal attacks against school system employees or board members. To maintain orderly conduct, the public comment segment of this meeting may not be used for any other purposes, including presentation of political or campaign issues, matters involving disciplinary action, pending employee disciplinary matters, pending claims, complaints, or litigation against a district or district personnel. Participants are required to engage in meaningful but civil communications. The presiding officer of the board or parliamentarian may order the removal of any person interfering with the expeditious or orderly process of such meeting, provided such officer has first issued a warning that continued interference with the orderly process of the meeting will result in removal. All statements shall be directed to the presiding officer. No person may address or question board members individually. Each statement may be made by, a member of the public shall be limited to three minutes in duration. A designated group representative will have a maximum of six minutes. No speaker may yield his or her time to another person. This policy does not prohibit the board from maintaining orderly conduct or proper decorum in a public meeting.
Thank you. Okay, I'll start calling the speakers up, and you'll come up to this podium, please, and identify yourself, please, when you come up to speak. Deborah Donahue? please, and identify yourself, please, when you come up to speak. Deborah Donahue, Natalie Tietzert, Gillian Morosini. Good morning.
Thank you, board members. Thank you, Superintendent Beaman. I'm standing before you. I was gonna cite a whole lot of the same information that you have already heard this morning, so I'm just asking you to listen to the medical professionals. They truly know what's best for our children. They truly know what's best for our community.
Order, please.
I'm a parent of a senior in high school at Winter Springs High School, Go Bears. She wears a mask every day. She wore a mask to take the ACT, didn't interfere with her ability to take it. She scored high enough that she can gain admission to an Ivy League school. Masks aren't interfering with their ability to learn. She is able to learn. She has maintained above a 4.0. This is absolutely ridiculous because we're putting children's safety at risk. We have an obligation to protect our children, and that's what I'm asking you to do. Judge Cooper ruled the executive order is unconstitutional. I'm asking that you vote in favor of masks. Thank you.
Thank you. Morning.
Morning. My name's Natalie Tietzert. I'm from Oviedo. My son was on a ventilator and then supplemental oxygen in ICU for months after he was born. He could not breathe on his own. I would not wish for anyone to have, to see their child go through that. It's an awful experience, and it sticks to your soul. The people in Seminole County are good people. We're good people. We care about each other, and I'm sure as a community, we can agree that if we could prevent one child or one adult from ending up on a ventilator, or with permanent health issues, or even lose their life, that we would work together to prevent that from happening. I think where we disagree is who would be hurt or helped by implementing a mask mandate in schools. I know there are a lot of strong opinions in this room, but as a school board, you represent a group that believes in education, in education. Shouldn't our education system respect the views of those educated on the topic? The CDC and the medical community recommend masks and conclude that they can protect from disease. The CDC and the medical community have studied and concluded that masks do not prevent children from getting an upper dose. I was gonna come up here and talk about how I actually gave birth to my youngest child while wearing a mask due to COVID-19 protocols at the hospital. And while it made the situation a bit sweatier, I could breathe fine for the situation at hand. I can mention that I worked in a hot, humid, and high particulate environment as an engineer while wearing a mask all day, and I could breathe fine, but at the end of the day, I think my opinion is not any more valuable than anyone else's here, except for the medical experts. They say a mask can save a life, and they are educated more than we are on this subject. Why are we questioning this as an education board? Here in Florida, we require vaccines to go to school. We require you to be properly dressed. We require seatbelts in cars to keep people safe. This is no different. You have an insanely hard job. You didn't sign up for this. You didn't sign up to be on a board in a pandemic, but we're here. And I don't know how you will be able to live with yourselves if we lose a child or another, another teacher or staff member who could have been protected if we just listened to the medical experts and wore masks. I leave you with this.
Order.
Just because they are loud does not mean they are right. Please vote for masks.
Order.
Thank you.
Order.
Gillian, then Alyssa Klarmann, then Sue Monaco.
Hello. My name is Gillian Morosini, and I'm a resident of Oviedo. I own a fine art center in Oviedo. We have hundreds of Seminole County kids and their families come through our door every single week. We not only require masks in our building, but we require them to be worn correctly over their noses for every single human who walks in my door aged four and up. To date, we have not had a single outbreak in our classes. We have had students and instructors who have caught COVID elsewhere, and still not a single person has caught it while at our studio. I track very diligently. Now, I know...
Order.
This is partially luck. Just because a seatbelt doesn't save every life. No mask is 100% effective, but seatbelts do save thousands of lives, and my studio is proof that masks do spread, the masks do prevent the spread of COVID. People sitting in this room are getting angry because they think we're on opposing sides. We are not on opposing sides. We have all been tricked into thinking this is an us versus them battle, when really this is us versus COVID. Every single person in this room hates that our lives and our children's lives have been drastically changed because of COVID. We all hate wearing masks. We all want our children to be safe, and we all want to go to back some semblance of normalcy. Where we differ is that, to me, safety does not just mean that my kid and my students don't die. Safety also means protecting them from the unimaginable heartbreak of losing their parents, who are the major age group getting killed off right now. Safety means protecting them from the trauma of finding out that they spread the disease and inadvertently killed someone. I work with...
Order. Order.
I work with children every age, from, from age two to 18, and out of the heart of it, always, they want to be helpers. They want to cheer their friends up. They want to help grandma when she's sick, and they want to protect people. Right now, we protect people by wearing masks. We stop this insanity by wearing masks. We get back to life and normalcy.
Order.
By wearing masks, and we keep each other safe by wearing a mask. Very few people like wearing masks. Very few kids like doing their homework, putting on a seatbelt, brushing their teeth, or wearing pants. We all do things we don't want to do every day, and most of these things we begrudgingly do don't give us the opportunity to save lives. On another note, I'd like to bring up...
Order.
On another note, I'd like to bring up the economic impact your decision as a board has, which has not been brought up before. I own a fine art studio in Oviedo. I employ... I employ over 30 individuals in Oviedo. Individuals who teach private and group lessons to your children in Seminole County, a county which has, according to the dashboard, over 7,000 individuals been quarantined since the beginning of the month. You can only imagine the number of lessons and classes we've had to cancel, and the drastic impact on our finances. I know my instructors and my business is not the only one suffering because the astronomical spread of COVID in SCPCS. As a board, you will not, you are not the fix-all for this disease. You're not our answer. You are not angel solutions to the trauma. We are all collective experiences.
Order.
I'll let you finish.
But you are certainly and drastically able to stop spread, stop the spread by requiring all individuals who are on Seminole County public school property to wear a mask and to wear it properly. Thank you.
Thank you.
Order. Order. Order.
Board members, if, if, if a speaker is... If a speaker is interrupted, I will extend their time respectfully. Thank you. Good morning.
Ladies and gentlemen, good morning. My name is Alyssa Klarmann. I'm a registered nurse, and these are my three beautiful children who attend...
Order, please.
Seminole County. Adam is in third grade and loves math. Noah is in second grade and loves reading, and the youngest guy is Eli. Eli just started kindergarten this year. The first day was pretty tough. The principal and teachers had to carry him inside when he froze and broke down crying, but he's gotten better every day, and recently told Mrs. Harris, "You're my best friend." We are very lucky that his two older brothers are there to help him get on and off the bus and walk him to the classroom each day. Eli watches his brothers intently every moment. When they smile, he knows things are okay. When they frown, he gets worried. You see, Eli is autistic. Like many autistic children, Eli has trouble reading unspoken cues and facial expressions, and that's before you take away his ability to see half the face and any smile or frown. Also, like many autistic kids, he's got sensory issues. Here he is in 20-degree weather with his jacket pushed up to his elbows because he can't tolerate the cloth on his arms, no matter how cold it is. We are meeting today to consider whether the Seminole County School Board should re-impose the mask mandate. Let's be clear what that means. Right now, everyone is free to wear masks if they choose to do so. Mandate means that the choice of whether to make my sons wear masks to torture my special needs son with sensory issues... ...away his ability to get reassurance cues and feedback from his older brothers, as he does every day. That choice is being stripped from me, his mother. That is a very serious decision, ladies and gentlemen, that my children's healthcare decision no longer belongs to me, his mother, an ICU nurse, so I know what I'm talking about. That choice is being taken from me. So I ask you, if the CDC came out today and decided that wearing cloth masks would not protect our children from COVID, is there anyone here who would still demand that they wear them? If the CDC said today, "This mask won't protect against COVID," would anyone here still remove my rights as a parent to make that decision and force my children to wear masks? What if the CDC already said that? What if they declared...
Order. Order, please.
...declared back in September 2020 that cloth masks cannot protect you from wildfire smoke particles. What if smoke particles are roughly 10 micrometers? That's that one. Well, COVID particles are roughly .13 micrometers. I don't know if you can see it, but that 's all, that's all. So here is that tweet, ladies and gentlemen. The CDC declared that cloth masks can't protect against wildfire particles, which are about 76 times as large as the coronavirus. Knowing what you now do, I am putting my faith and trust in you, my neighbors, and friends to make the right decision.
Your time.
Keep healthcare decisions where they belong with the...
Order. Order.
...up on the mask for no good reason. I am begging you to not re-impose the mask mandate. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And Carrie Rankin.
Order.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Sue Monaco, and I recently moved here with my family from Bend, Oregon. We live in Winter Springs. My son is in eighth grade and just started school at Indian Trails Middle School, and my daughter is a registered homeschooler with a dual, in the dual enrollment program at Seminole State. I'm very thankful. I'm very relieved, and you have no idea how happy we are to be in Florida. If you want to live in a state where the government tells you and that they know what's best for you and your children, please go to Oregon. Happy to sit down with you and talk to you about my experience the last three years dealing with the state. The governor has stated, "The state knows what is best for your children, not parents." So here are my thoughts and experiences on the less than 45 days that I've been in Florida. A school board is not trained and should not have the responsibility to determine if my child should wear a mask or not, nor should any government official. The discussions I have had with my healthcare providers to guide me as to what is best for me and my family is personal. I was quite dismayed when a letter had to be sent if I wanted to opt my son out of wearing a mask. I feel there have, there should have been a letter to opt him in because masks are not normal. But from what I've been dealing with in Oregon, I am just relieved to have a choice because my friends in Oregon do not have a choice. They don't even have a choice to go outside without a mask right now. I've seen people at 10,000 feet on top of a mountain in Bend, Oregon, with a mask on. It's out of control. The fear is real. No one should ever be mandated to wear a mask, have a vaccine, or undergo any other medical procedure. We can argue all day over the science, but at the end of the day, it is what you are comfortable with. Life is full of risks. Every day we walk outside, there is a risk. Florida is fortunate to have a Parent's Bill of Rights, and from what I understand, this allows parents to make medical decisions for their child. End of conversation. We shouldn't even be spending more time on this. A woman before me spoke about forest fires and the toxins from fires. I lived in it. Weeks, weeks going outside. Some days I couldn't even see across the street. The smoke was so horrific, horrific. When the Oregon Health Authority told us last year that that same mask that was gonna protect me from COVID would do nothing with the smoke, I then researched. Like the woman said before me, that mask does nothing. It does absolutely nothing. So I close with this. Life is a balance. Every day we weigh, we weigh our risks. As parents, we question, we doubt, and we wonder. Should I order the more expensive car sheet, seat? Should I spend extra money for the fire escape ladder from the second floor? What if I go to a beach and a wave hits my child and they drown? What if my kid gets in a car accident, which I'm very scared about living here after coming from the middle of nowhere?
Time. It's your time, please.
And I, I'll wrap it up with this. It's not gonna end up with masks. I've watched it in Oregon. It's a slippery slope, folks, and it frightens me. So what I ask is that we all take a deep breath. We all love our children. We all want what's best for our children, but I've watched the slippery slope, and it's frightening, and I'm scared for my friends that are leaving Oregon because of what they're watching their government do to them.
Thank you. The Michael Scott, Michael Beck, and Carrie Rankin, please.
Thank you all for allowing me the time. I'm not as prepared and as eloquent as the people who spoke before me, but what I will say is that I could stand up here...
Michael Scott.
Michael Scott.
Okay, and please address us, not the audience. Thank you.
I will belabor all the points we've made about the ineffectivity of masks. I will also say what the UK has finally come out and said, is that no pupil, read children, should be denied an education whether they do or do not wear a mask. We have a choice. If you want to wear a mask, wear your mask. Per your own stats, you are at 10% of the child population that are opting out. So what we need to ask ourselves is, why do we want to force 10% to do that, to take away the parent's choice of what there is, what is best for their child? Without complying to what we deem to be covering ourselves, but we are only kicking the can down the road. There are emotional, and mental, and physiological, and psychological damage we are doing to our children.
Good morning. Y'all have a hard job.
Michael Beck?
Yes, ma'am. Michael Beck. I have a six-year-old son, but I just wanted to state the facts. There is no data, none, that says these are effective for kids. And let me back, go back to, mask, there's a proper way and a wrong way to wear a mask. I can tell you, I can, just by looking around, a lot of people wearing masks. I think you're the only one wearing the right mask. All these aren't certified. Every mask is certified. When I was in nursing school, we had to be fitted every year for an N95. We had to do a test to see if we could, any aerosol, get anything in our mouth. If we're gonna mandate masks for kids, the school needs to supply the masks that are required or gonna fight the virus, and they need to be fitted every single time, if you're gonna do that. But I don't think that should be your choice to make. Like my mom said to me when I'm growing up, I'm one of eight kids, you know? She said, "I brought you in this world. I can take you out," you know? So, with that being said, let us make that decision. And God forbid my son get it and die. That would be hard. That would be so hard. But that was my choice. That was my choice. So, thank you.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning, ladies. I just wanted to thank you for this opportunity this morning to speak. Last year, my son was part-time due to the fact that I do not want my child wearing a mask all day. Even with three to four hours of wearing a mask every day, he became moody and depressed. He came home sleeping every day, every day. He was tired. He started getting migraines. You tell me why that happened. It had never happened until he put a mask on his face. The worst part is, he just hated school. This year is a complete 180. He loves school. He is a senior at Oviedo High School. It's afternoon naps. His only reason he returned full-time to school was to become mask-free. He is a healthy child who carries the COVID antibodies. He is no threat to any child or any adult that is on his campus. Using fear, a universal mandate, mask mandate, is wrong. It is so sad. Pro-maskers are touting death rates in hospitals as excuses to mask kids. Have they looked into what's really causing these deaths? Hospital protocols. Vitamin infusions in hospitals, ivermectin, HCQ, why? Because it's not accepted by the National Institute of Health. Why? Drugs, these drugs have been around for years and have been used worldwide. Why won't they use them? Here's the key. Follow the money. Big companies. Ladies, what we need to do, okay? And it's, it's cheap. Ivermectin is cheap. Why doesn't it work? Wink, wink. Follow me now. Agencies like the CDC and the FDA do not work for the American taxpayers. They are nonprofit corporations that work for companies, politicians, and individuals like Bill Gates. For years, ethics commit. For years, ethic complaints have been lodged against these agencies for the cozy relationships between them and the companies they are supposed to regulate. Regulate. Let's think about that. FDA commissioners sit on Pfizer's board, and they're telling us, it's a revolving door of Washington proteism. And you, you expect us to follow their corrupt marching orders? Really? The CDC has plans from 2019 detailing concentration camps. They call it shielding. It's on their website. Look it up. It details how to break up families. Would you support that too? How about mandatory vaccines for schoolchildren? Because Dr. Fakey just recommended that this week. Are you going to vote yes on that too? When does it end? When it ends, when tyranny becomes law and rebellion becomes duty. American patriot, First Lady Abigail Adams, we are determined to form in a rebellion and will not hold ourselves bound by any laws in which we have no voice. I add that we will not be bound by any law that is corrupt and pose serious harm to our children because the only thing for the triumph, for the triumph of over evil is for good people to do nothing. Thank you.
Amanda McCoy. Chris Mintz.
Order.
Amanda McCoy. Chris Mintz. Is that the person you said is not in the room? Rebecca Newman. Good morning.
Good morning. Hi, my name's Amanda McCoy. I'm not a speaker, so I'm surprised I'm here. My name is Amanda McCoy, and I'm a parent of a child at Seminole County School. I'm here on behalf of, I'm here on behalf of saying no against the mask mandate. One of my biggest concerns today is I have a screenshot of a political party that showed up today to fill these seats here. Well, that's my seat that you were trying to take. So I'm here to secure that seat at the table and say, keep your politics up for our kids. Verge no against the politics of the mask mandate and listen to this audience that showed up for the rights of our children, not a political party. I'll close with a quote from Dr. Flynn. Our right to a life of liberty and freedom guided by personal choice is not a right granted by the government. It is a God-given intrinsic. It is not the job of the government to impose restrictions, mandates, and orders on people that take away their personal liberties, including when it comes to the health decisions they make for themselves and their families. Health freedom is the internal agency and autonomy that lives within each individual to make their own choices regarding their health and subsequently to live with the consequences of their choices. For children or their, or those unable to make informed healthcare decisions, it is the responsibility of the parent or legal guardian to advocate wisely on their behalf. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Holly Mink. I'm speaking for Chris Mintz since he was so kindly removed. My whole point of coming out here today is to talk about the actual numbers. We sit there, we saw all the doctors and all of your panel give us numbers up here. And if we go back and look at our actual numbers, those numbers that.
Please address the board.
We have approximately .67% of our county that is infected with this virus right now. That means less than 1% of our population in this county is infected, okay? In that number, .05% is hospitalized. That means less than one-half of 1/10th of 1% is in the hospital over this disease. Now, what we're doing is telling everybody they need a mask. There is no evidence anywhere written in stone or verified that they actually work. We can go on and keep putting these on as a false sense of security, but it's not doing us any good. I prefer for everybody to have their freedoms. If you want to wear a mask, I'm not against it, but I don't want you to tell me that my kids have to wear theirs. I have a soft-spoken kid, obviously not like her mother. But when you put this in front of her and she's trying to talk to somebody, they can't hear her. And it's, it's embarrassing when she keeps trying to say what, and then they look at her and her grades slip. Fortunately, she's done a great job and kept up with it, but it's a very hard time. And it is psychologically hard for these kids, okay? My husband took the paper, so I'm very unprepared to speak. I guess that's all I'm going to say because everybody else is doing a great job, other than the fact that, please, folks, let's look at the actual numbers, the statistics, not just these numbers from the hospitals. And in fact, while I'm saying that, look at the numbers from the hospitals. Those numbers, Advent Health was on the news just yesterday saying, our numbers are actually starting to go down. Numbers are starting to go down now, and we haven't started wearing masks in school now. Why would we start? I don't understand it. The evidence that's coming out now is just not backing up for us to go and switch our, our policy now. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Rebecca Newman. Thomas.
Order, order.
Rebecca Newman.
Sir, you've been warned.
Thomas Krieger. Jen Werle. Let me repeat those names for you, please. Rebecca Newman. Thomas Krieger. Jen Werle. And then Megan Fort. Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, school board and superintendent. My name is Rebecca Newman. I'm a parent of a Seminole County student, and I live in Oviedo. I, along with probably everybody in this whole room, want for anything more than this pandemic to be over. We're tired, we're frustrated, but we cannot just wish a virus away. We're in a public health emergency despite what all of the so-called medical and data experts in our audience right now are trying to tell you. But we need to protect the vulnerable populations and the under-12s and the immunocompromised parents, brothers, sisters of our students and our teachers. As the last line of defense, school board members, you must enact a full mask mandate as recommended by the CDC and update the quarantine policy. No one expected that Delta would break through the vaccine, but it has. And sending COVID positive students back to class simply because they're vaccinated is contributing to the quick, uncontrolled community spread that is overwhelming the hospitals and ICUs. I believe all of you are trying to do your very best during this turbulent, polarizing, politically charged time, but your job, as Dr. Calderon has said publicly, is to protect all children. You cannot do that if only some of the students are wearing masks. And at this point.
Order.
Pole after pole after pole of students, of parents want masks on their kids in schools to protect them. So please stop listening to this misinformation and the noise in the system. Follow the science and medical experts that you just had up here, and just like you did last year, when the COVID positivity rate was higher in this community or lower in this community than it is at this point this year. So please enact a full mask mandate. Thank you.
Thank you.
Order.
Madam Chair. Madam Chair.
Order.
Member Calderon.
Order.
To all those in the audience, I'd respectfully ask you to give the same respect we're giving to you, to each of the speakers. We'll get through this meeting a lot faster. Or outbursts, so I'm, we're trying very, very hard to give respect to every single speaker to listen, but I can't listen if there's sidebar conversations. So thank you for allowing us to do our job to listen.
Thank you, Dr. Calderon.
Good morning. My name is Tom Krieger from Longwood. I'd like to thank all of you for your public service. It's not a fun job, as we can see, we're here month after month talking about these things. I was taught a long time ago that things are about perspective and what you look at and how you look at things. So I'm just going to bring statistics. I'm not going to argue about masks and all that other stuff. We saw a lot of information from hospitals and stuff, but here are the facts that break down to the people in Seminole County. 15% of all cases in Seminole County are from children. There's 394 cases daily in the last seven-day average of students, of people who have COVID. That means 59%, 59% of those people are children. That represents 99.992% of children don't have COVID, okay? Across the nation, because people say, well, the whole nation, let's talk about the nation. 470 kids off of the CDC's website last night, out of 74.2 million that are under the age of 18, have not died from COVID. That means 99.9999937% of kids have not died from COVID. Why are we telling people they need to put masks on? It is a choice. In Seminole County, 661 deaths out of 471,000 people. That's .01% of the entire population in Seminole County. We're talking about things that are less than .1% were having these meetings. I ask you as a school board, why have we not done anything for the people who have repeated? 3% of the students in Seminole County last year had to repeat. 3%. That's a much greater number than 99, than 99.9, .1%. But yet we call special meetings wearing masks when our children are falling behind. Where is the special meeting to discuss how do we get all of our kids back where they need to be?
Order. Order, please, to allow the speaker to finish. Thank you.
And I'm not here. 1% of the entire population in Seminole County. We're talking about things that are less than .1% were having these meetings. I ask you as a school board, why have we not done anything for the people who have repeated? 3% of the students in Seminole County last year had to repeat. 3%. That's a much greater number than 99, than 99.9, .1%. But yet we call special meetings wearing masks when our children are falling behind. Where is the special meeting to discuss how do we get all of our kids back where they need to be?
Order. Order, please, to allow the speaker to finish. Thank you.
And I'm not here to pick a side. I'm here, I want the choice for my daughter. My daughter goes to Teague Middle School. In her school, there's been four cases of it. We put numbers up on the board. So the first three weeks of the, the little data thing, we had nothing for quarantine. Well, the numbers, in my opinion, were too low, so we have to figure out a way to make more numbers and scare more people. 1,354 students out of 68,000 represents .019% of kids have COVID. .019%, ladies. We're going to change what we're doing for .019? Could you imagine if every time something was .019, we had to call a special meeting? You guys wouldn't have to be able to do anything. You'd just pack up and you're having a tent in the back.
Order.
We talked about this in COVID. I have a question. For all the people who are saying we need to wear masks and are so adamant and so passionate about it, where's your passion for the 3 million?
Please address the board.
Excuse me. Where are the 3 million kids that are going to die in America this year from hunger? No one says that. Is there a special? Where's your passion about that? And for the one young lady who said, because you're loud doesn't mean you're right, I will quote Booker T. Washington. A lie does not become truth. Wrong does not become right. Evil does not become good just because it's accepted by the majority. Thank you for your.
Jen Werle, are you still in the room? Thank you. Then Megan Forte or Forte. And James Charles, I don't know if you wish to speak or you were just submitting the information, so thank you.
Okay, all right. Jen Werle, Oviedo. Guys, I just, yeah, as you guys know, I've been praying for you, and I just know you have the hardest job ever. Every single person up here, I just, I pray for you every day. I feel so awful what's going on. But what I'm here to talk about is the teachers, because the unions don't care. The teachers right now, if they don't get the COVID vaccine, they're actually not paid if they get COVID. I don't know if you guys know that or not. So they're, they're actually not being paid for their time off unless they get the vaccination, which is completely unacceptable because that, again, these teachers have been through enough. When it comes to what's happening, I actually am on the board at the school that, I'm on a lot of boards at the schools, and I'm there all the time. At the Back to Teacher Breakfast, it was amazing. Out of the 50 teachers at the school, one of the schools that I help out at, only four had masks on, and they were so happy. The smiles, it was the energy that I hadn't seen in two years because last year, the prior year was so awful. And then the very next day, the rug was ripped out from underneath them. And on Friday, at, whenever the kids were able to come in and meet their teachers, the sadness, it was, it was palpable. It was really, really unfortunate. I honestly want, my heart breaks for those teachers. And not only that, but let's talk about the kids, as he just mentioned. When are we going to care about the kids' education? Currently, right now, my son is at home playing video games. He's at home playing video games, let's be honest. There are two homeboys cannot be left alone on the computer, but I had to come here today. He's at home playing video games. Why? Because he potentially was exposed to someone who had COVID. And I understand completely that the only way that any disease will be stopped, and that's the flu or anything else that we get, we do have to kind of watch out, right? If someone's sick, unfortunately, people send their kids to school sick. I still haven't figured that out, and all the time I've had kids. But people do do that, and that's fine. But my son is now at home. The only reason he can't go back to school is because he's not vaccinated. And if you're vaccinated, as we know, you can still get and spread this disease. So it really doesn't make any sense that my child, a straight A student, honor roll, National Honor Society, is now at home playing video games because he isn't vaccinated. We really need to take a look at what we're doing here. If a child is not presenting symptoms, he should be, he or she should be allowed to come back to school, guys. Or it's really, it's really about the education of our kids, and I know that that, there are a lot of you, and Abby, I know that, not to address, but I know you're a teacher and you care, and I know a lot of you do. But let's get back to the education and what we're here for. Let's figure out ways. Right now, there's no way for my kids to be sent home to learn. All they're doing is looking on a campus. There's no teaching ability because we've gotten rid of Connect. At least last year, we were able to have that option when our children were home. So what I'm asking is to take care of the teachers. Don't discriminate based on vaccinations. Do not discriminate based on the teachers' pay, which is totally unacceptable. I hope that the gentleman that speaks on that will discuss the pay that the teachers are not getting just because they're not vaccinated. I really pray that you guys, I think we're going to make the right decision here with not masking the kids or having the choice. And I thank you for your time, and I hope you guys have a great day.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name's Megan Forte. Thank you for letting me speak today. I want to start off by telling you that I have absolutely no words for the way that it feels to know that I'm standing here in front of you and I'm going to speak, and it doesn't matter because you've probably already made your decision. I am the mother of two middle schoolers, and I don't remember any of you being a part in the making, birthing, or raising of them, yet I sit here perplexed as to how you believe you know what's best for my child over me. You're a school board. You don't have the allowance to make a medical decision about my kids. You know nothing of their history, their diagnoses, or their anxieties, and here you are, sitting high and mighty, coercing my children into something regarding their bodies against their will. We teach them that no one can make you do something that makes you feel uncomfortable. No one can make you wear a bikini if you don't want to, and then threaten you if you don't. But here you are, doing that anyway about masks in the name of science. Speaking of science, why aren't we using it, all of it, not just the parts that we want to hear? Florida as a whole is at an R-rate of less than one. .73, in fact. So less than one person will get infected from every infectious person. It's pretty good odds, especially when you think about the median R-number for the seasonal flu, which is 1.28. And yet here we are, never masked, quarantined, socially distanced, or scarlet-lettered people for it. The speaker before us said closing the schools in 1918. The R-number was 2.8 then, were .73. In 2009, the swine flu was 1.6. Did we mask up? Did we quarantine? No. The regular flu is more infectious than COVID is at this very moment. And here I am, taking time off of work to come and beg you for my parental rights. Time that I'm going to need when you quarantine my kids and the rights that the governor said you cannot impede on. My kids already had COVID. Right now, they have fancy, tiny, little superheroes with virus-killing capes on, doing exactly what God intended their bodies to do. And yet you're going to force.
Order, please, allow the speaker to finish. Thank you.
They're going to force my kids to mask up. Why are we not talking more about antibodies and? and immunities? Change the narrative to something more positive. More and more studies that are coming out, especially overseas, are showing that antibodies are longer-lasting. One of my kids had regular COVID, and the other had Delta. Neither got sick from the other. Both have accidentally been close contact exposed several times to other people, and yet they still continue to test negatively. Their scientific antibodies fought the virus, learned from it, and have now designed themselves to fight COVID off. My children don't need a mask. My last point, you are an elected official. Do your job. Represent the majority from which I see and hear, is to let parents be parents. Because I promise you, if you make a decision against the will of our children, we will decide to vote you out, put somebody in that will.
Order, please, allow the speaker to finish. Thank you.
The elected official that no longer represents the people no longer holds any value.
Okay, so James Charles, are you here? So, you just want this in the record? Okay. Jordan Forte? Audrey and Jesus Santiago? Ryan Brimmer?
Hello, my name is Jordan. I am a middle schooler at Sanford Middle. I appreciate that you care. However, I would like to ask you that you allow my medical decisions about my bodies to stay between me, my doctor, and my mom. The numbers are high, but that also means so are the numbers with the kids with antibodies, like myself. I strongly feel that this decision should be at an individual level and not everyone as a whole. In addition, masks are paper. Paper comes from the trees. We are killing our planet even faster. Thank you for--
Order, please. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Jesus Santiago. My wife, Audrey. I'm just going to read from a statement that we have prepared. I have a high school student in Seminole County. He goes to school with a mask on, and I always hope that he wears it properly. When we know more, we do better. We doubt that there were rules of the road at the advent of the first automobile. We're old enough to remember when babies and children used to ride in car seats untethered and adults were unbelted. Over time, we learned that the rules and restrictions imposed on drivers and passengers prevented injury and death. Some may have complained, but the laws changed and the rules of the road and car seat, seatbelt safety are now widely accepted. We often see signs in storefronts that boldly state, "No shirt, no shoes, no service." Airports, airplanes, restaurants, and other public buildings no longer allow smoking on the premises. Fancy restaurants require a jacket and tie. Most people accept that if they don't want to comply, they must take their business elsewhere. We would go on and on with other similar examples, but in the interest of time, we will not. We simply want to state that these restrictions are not put in place to usurp anyone's rights, but to protect the health, safety, and welfare of all. COVID-19 is not a political issue. It is--
Order. Allow the speaker to finish.
It is a public health issue, and we must respond to it as such. And we must be willing to learn as we go. We do not have the statistics, and we're not sure if Seminole County schools even had a dashboard this time last year. We do remember that a year ago, the masking was in full force, and even without the luxury of a vaccine, I might add, the numbers of cases were minimal. Throughout the school year, numbers remained relatively low. In addition, flu was almost nonexistent, existent, all because of masks. This year, we have the vaccine, and masks are optional. And look at what has happened. Even with the vaccine, the numbers are alarmingly high. That tells us that masks work. And until we--
Order. Order. Allow the speaker to finish.
And until we have a much better handle on this virus, masks are the best defense in our schools.
Please drop up your comments.
We do not want to address what adults do on their own time. Wear a mask or not, get the vaccine or not, that's your decision. But--
Order. Order.
But our children have the right to an education. All of our children. They should all have the opportunity to attend school in person, if that's what works for their family. We also maintain that our schools are no different--
Order.
--courts, restaurants, museums, et cetera, who say, "If you want to enter our premises, you must be masked."
Please wrap it up.
Masks are the least invasive means of controlling the virus. A judge, in accordance with recent CDC guidelines, recently ruled that mask mandates are reasonable. For the greater good of all, we would like Seminole County schools to follow suit with a mask mandate. Thank you very much.
Ryan Brimmer? Ryan Brimmer? Bill Shilson? Ryan Mays? And Noah Garrett? Order. Order. Ladies and gentlemen, please, allow the speaker to speak, so that we can continue with the business at hand. Sir?
Good morning. I'm Ryan Brimmer. My wife and I are both products of the Seminole County public school system. And we are the parents of two amazing children, one of whom is a first grader at a Seminole County elementary school. We are homeowners and taxpayers in Seminole County, and I'm honored to volunteer my time coaching my fifth season of youth baseball here. My wife gladly volunteered as a room parent last year for our son's class, assisting his teacher with various tasks throughout the school year, while she donated her time and our money to help in any way we could. She was more than happy to do it. Our first grader has been described by his teachers as a class leader, one who encourages his peers and positively impacts those around him, a compassionate and caring student, and one that other children are excited to befriend. His teacher has said that the class often creates quite a stir when trying to say goodbye to him when he heads, when he heads to car line, so much so that they have to say goodbye in unison after a count to three. We found that cute. If you remove our ability to make medical decisions for our child and force us to mask our six-year-old for another school year, we will be inclined to withdraw him from his elementary school and we will homeschool him. Ask you, is my son the type of student you don't mind losing? Are we the type of family you're content with displacing? And is this not the right school system for us? Despite my wife being a stay-at-home mom his whole life, we were eager to enroll him in kindergarten last year, understanding that the data was still coming in on the effectiveness of masks. And vaccines are still not widely available for adults. This year is not last year. Vaccines are widely available and easily accessible. You have more cases than last year for the same reasons the car lines got longer this year. Testing is also increased. Parents are rushing their kids to get tested for every exposure notification, even if they don't have symptoms. We need to wake up. This madness has to stop. Our kids are the victims in all of this. My son, the only one in his class who doesn't wear a mask, told us that the substitute teacher talked about masks. She announced to the entire class, "I'm sweating under my mask, but it's okay, because masks keep us safe." Imagine the pain I felt for my child, my six-year-old, knowing that this adult could have caused him to feel othered in the classroom, where we had nobody standing up for him. The next day, my wife marched into school, our nine-month-old by her side, and spoke to the principal, who recognized it was wrong, apologized, and promised to address the situation. She's always been gracious, helpful, and empathetic when it comes to the students. Thankfully, my child is resilient and knows he isn't odd or different than the other kids in his class. He isn't harming anyone. However, he does feel bad for the kids in his class who have to wear a mask all day, and I do too. In previous meetings, those of us advocating for the rights of parents and children have been accused of not following the science. Science evolves and is informed by data. We need to follow the data. So, to those accusers and to the board, I would ask, what does success look like, specifically? Have we quantified it? Have we set a realistic target or an acceptable threshold? If not, why? Knowing we can't get to zero, what is an acceptable number of cases for us to remove the mask mandate? How will we be able to determine that any decrease in the number of cases is attributable solely to the mask mandate and not to the seasonal or natural course of the virus as more people achieve natural immunity?
Please wrap up your comments.
If we don't see any improvement in the numbers, are we willing to go back to an opt-out option for parents, because this didn't work? And while I know these words may fall on deaf ears, I couldn't stay silent anymore. I personally know dozens of other parents who agree with me, but are afraid or unwilling to speak up. I know parents who were afraid to opt out of the mask mandate, because they felt their child would be ostracized in their class and by your teachers and administrators, as mine was. To those parents, we can't stay silent anymore. Our children deserve an education where they are the priority, and where the parents are able to choose what is best for their health, where academic achievement is more important than bowing to the mob. Parents deserve the right to opt out of this nonsense.
Thank you. Bill Shilson, are you in the room? Thank you.
Bill Shilson speaking, Florida State University. They gave me their time. Sorry, I'll try and put a mask on. Thank you, Board, for entertaining the public today prior to your consideration on this latest mask decision. Let me begin by commenting that my wife, Kelly, and I have just recently recovered from the infamous virus, and it was absolutely, positively no fun at all. Two weeks, we were completely out of commission with the virus itself, then the pneumonia dragged on for a couple, possibly few, more weeks. Recovery was excruciatingly slow. But recovery did, as almost everyone does, very much like the flu, which, by miraculous good fortune, has all but been eradicated. One of our close family members spent three weeks in the ICU, but she now appears to have just made a turn for the better. Thank the good Lord and our hospital care, and apologies to the atheists. For three weeks, we unfortunately and incorrectly suspected that we had contracted the virus from our youngest daughter, but as it turns out, Kelly picked it up from someone at her gym, who works in healthcare, and was exposed. Kelly unceremoniously gave it to me, and then we all went dark for the better part of a month. We were eventually able to piece together the correct story after re-entering society in this utterly repugnant new normal. It is impossible to overstate the importance of the fact that we did not all get sick from an unvaccinated child, but from a fully vaccinated adult. The virus is out there. It's unavoidable. Thirty percent of the US population has already contracted it, and the other 70% are going to. It's as simple as that. Symptomatic or not, vaxxed or not, it will make the rounds. Honestly, Kelly and I are glad to have gotten it and gotten over it. One less thing as Forrest Gump would Oak High. Everyone in this room has a fatal disease. It's called life. It's 100% mortality rate. Get busy living or get busy dying. It's going to get you either way. That being said, our teachers are justifiably scared. For a year and a half now, we've all been subjected to a ceaseless and inescapable 24/7 fear porn marathon. And a big thank you to the first hour and a half of the robust season two here this morning. Inexcusably, our science-based scientists who have done, have done an absolutely dreadful job of communicating exactly who is the most and least vulnerable to the virus. What are comorbidities? What are the worst ones? Why do some races seem to fare worse than others? Is there anything that can mitigate that? How effective are vitamins and supplements? Who are the credible authorities that could guide a person who wants to do absolutely everything within his or her own power to protect themselves? But I digress. We're here about masks. Here's an indisputable mask fact. The paper surgical masks, gaiters, bandanas, and shirts that people naively affix to their faces are just as effective as Alyssa Milano's crocheted face diaper, which is to say they are not effective at all. If you want real and not pretend protection from things that are small as a virus, you need at least an N95, and really more like an N100 mask. You may even notice some of the important people wearing them here today. If you want to see what adequate protection actually looks like, go visit a hospital where coronavirus patients are and tell them you want to visit. The experience is surreal, to say the least. And then to pretend that your paper mask does anything at all other than catch a glob of spit or an airborne booger is disingenuous, to say the least. There is existing OSHA guidance that actually covers what teachers should be provided for respiratory protection based on specific environmental conditions. Get your pencils out. That guidance is OSHA 1910.134A2. I have several copies, if anybody wants it. Which means that if you're actually scared of inhaling the SARS-CoV-2 virus, the employer needs to provide that level of protection. There is also an Appendix D that goes along with this guidance, covers how to properly wear, care for, apply, remove, and discard these masks, and it is not nearly as simple as one might think. There was an earlier speaker that went on about properly applying, and hers was not properly applied. Let us now dispense with the pretense, the fear mongering, the virtue signaling, and address what the real legitimate concern is when it comes to a teacher getting ratted out by a contract tracking app or perhaps a more carbonaceous snitch. They go get a Rona test, and they should go get a Rona test, but then they go home to wait for the results, either unpaid or have to burn sick time for days while they wait. You think they stop teaching while they're home unpaid? That's what you call a rhetorical question. Let's say that this teacher gets the most congenial version of the virus, and they also happen to be young and in good health. They don't smoke, drink to excess, they take their vitamins, they don't have any comorbidities. Their best-case scenario is two days of sniffles, 10 days off, most assuredly burning sick, and then vacation time, and then it's gone, and then they're unpaid. Then we have the more likely scenario, which will probably be more like our experience. I do not expect Men's Health Magazine to be calling me anytime soon for a cover shoot. I'm overweight. One of my kidneys committed suicide 20 or 30 years ago, and I'm borderline high blood pressure. I don't smoke, but I did in another life, and I have been known to imbibe on occasion. In contrast, my wife, Kelly, goes to the gym every weekday, plays pickleball more times a week than I care to count. She's a few years my junior and clearly the better picture of health. For both of us, however, this translated to three weeks laid up and the fourth just barely functional. Neither of us were hospitalized, but I was two points on the OSAT meter away from that crap show. None of the teachers that I know can take a month or two off unpaid. Understanding the battlefield provides invaluable clarity. What can we do as a community to alleviate these realistic financial fears that our teachers have? These people are the veritable frontline. They are essential, and we should clearly communicate that. The fear of missing a mortgage payment, or worse, is legitimate and understandable. I submit that if we show the teachers that we have their backs, that they can relax a bit, they can feel like the valuable assets to this community that they are and not expendable adversaries in an unwinnable war.
Please wrap up your comments.
Equally important, our children won't be caught in the crosshairs of political and social agendas. They have enough on their plates as it is.
Thank you.
I would like to thank all of you for serving on the school board.
Are you Ryan?
I'm Ryan Mays.
Okay, thank you.
I know you do this because you have our kids' best interests at heart, and you want the best educational experience for our children. I did email all of you, and I got a response back from Tina, so Tina, thanks for, for replying back. I just want to say that my wife and I live in Sanford. We currently have four kids in the Seminole County school system. In the near future, when one kid finishes private school and the youngest is old enough, we'll have six kids in the Seminole County school system. Last year, we did Florida Virtual due to the mask mandate. That was my kid's choice. They chose to learn without wearing masks. Though successful, our kids missed in-person learning. The only reason our kids are back in-person learning this year is because we as parents have the option to sign a waiver and opt out of the mask mandate on behalf of our children. Our children have a hard time wearing masks for an hour or two at a time, let alone seven or eight hours a day, five days a week, that a mandate would require. Masks give them headaches and reduce my child's ability to learn. And isn't education the reason this school board exists? Not to make medical decisions for my children. I truly hope this school board will heed our governor's order, vote on the side of parental rights and freedom, and vote no to mandate masks. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Noah Garrett, Brad Miller, Amy Brown, and Katie Claxton.
Good morning.
Ma'am, I'm Noah.
Good morning.
I also want to thank you for responding to emails. Some of you have responded, and I appreciate that. I also appreciate whoever voted to allow more than 30 minutes to hear the public, to hear our cause. The cause that we fight for, you'll hear lots of statistics and lots of stories, the cause that we fight for is liberty.
Order, please allow the speaker to speak.
I understand that there are consequences to not wearing a mask, but there are also serious consequences to wearing the mask. As Ryan just said, his children struggle to wear the mask. If you're struggling to breathe, or if you're struggling to feel awkward, you're going to struggle to learn. Nevertheless, we've talked about allowing special medical conditions to be exempt from the mandate of masks. I don't understand why we're neglecting special exemptions for personal liberties. Shouldn't they also be included in the exemption to not wear the mask? I don't understand why we are sweeping aside our liberties given to us from our founding fathers to decide, and from God as parents, that those are being swept aside because we want to save the .0001 who might pass because of the COVID virus? Do we not drive on roads where people get injured? Do we not live in a world where we are at risk of many things? But nevertheless, this is an issue of personal liberties. I am here to fight for the salvation of mine and others' personal liberties as citizens of the United States of America.
Brad Miller, are you here? Okay. Amy Brown, Katie Claxton, and Frank Hunt, please.
Hi, my name is Katie Claxton, and I am a mom of two elementary-age students. This boils down to one thing: my right as a parent to make choices for my child. You guys represent us, and I plead with you all to please have the courage to follow what your constituents want. Give parents the right to choose what is best for their child. Let those that want to put their children in masks do so, and please leave ours alone. Mandating them is tragic, unscientific, and damaging. First, there is actually only one single retrospective study on the question whether masks actually reduce COVID transmission in children. One. And the results of this study were inconclusive, according to Dr. Macari from Johns Hopkins. Yet we sit here today discussing mandating children to wear face coverings. Based on what? You cannot prove that masking my child is even effective. More and more data is coming out suggesting masking in general is minimally effective to largely ineffective after 20 minutes of use for saturation. The science also supports that children are low-risk for acquiring and transmitting COVID-19. Period. The topic of masks have become so politicized, it prevents rational consideration of the evidence being presented to you guys. Masking is also physically and emotionally harmful to our children. This is not about protecting our kids as much as it is for all of you to look good in the public eye right now. Children chew on these masks, blow their noses in them, touch them, and the list goes on. An analysis was done by a lab used on children's face masks. Bacteria, parasites, fungi, and dangerous pathogenic and pneumonia-causing bacteria were detected in these used masks. If this is about health and safety, please make this make sense. They can increase levels of carbon dioxide, cause discomfort, distract from learning, create breathing difficulties, which is all well-documented support. Other countries are not requiring their students for these reasons. There is evidence that supports all of this, but it's not getting debunked, it's just flat-out getting ignored. Educationally, this whole concept is counterproductive. My son receives speech services through Seminole County, so this particular point is extremely personal to me. He's a first grader. Our children and their teachers need to be able to see their mouths moving to be able to understand how to make letter sounds, rhymes, and begin to learn and teach phonological awareness skills. This is important and vastly disregarded by this board. What about other impairments? We heard from somebody else earlier about autism. As a mental health professional in this community that you serve, I can also speak to the difficulty these kids already have identifying emotions, creating relationships, and reading nonverbal cues and facial expressions. What a disservice this is to them. All of us get information from facial expressions to learn how to signal emotions and responses. This is part of human connection and interaction. Without this, we are leaving children with social and emotional deficits in their formative years. We already complied with these masks last year, and no one can tell me what the long-term psychological effects mask mandates will have on my children, can they? Or what adverse effects this has on child development, or even their immune systems, for that matter.
Please wrap up.
Please let the parents choose.
Amy Brown, are you here? No, thank you. Frank Hunt? And then Wade Weaver and Jessica Boroskis?
Morning, my name is Frank Hunt. I'm not going to speak to you today about the numerous studies that show that masks are not effective, or the recent CDC study done in Georgia that showed there's no difference whether you wore a mask or not, or those who want to mask us and shut us down are being funded and supported by Big Pharma, or even about Dr. Fauci and the NIH have patents related to the vaccines, which are not vaccines, according to their manufacturers, and that Dr. Fauci personally made $20 million last year off the pandemic, or even about pineapple juice. No, I'm not going to talk to you about all that. I'm here to remind you that our founding documents pointed out that our rights come from God. They do not come from government, a school board, a superintendent, a health bureaucrat, a governor, nor a president, fake or real. We, the people, are saying that we've had enough of the political shenanigans that are being used to further a political agenda that goes against our American Judeo-Christian values and our constitutional principles that made this country great. In May, the mask mandate was a policy, and as such required a 28-day notice of the meeting because a few on the board administration were trying to stop the effort to make it optional. Now, when they think they have an illusionary window of opportunity because of a temporary ban by a judge, they call it a procedure in order to get around the law. Our superintendent calls it a procedure, and unanimity goes around what the board voted on a couple of months ago. For your information, I have several years of administrative experience as Secret Coordinator of City Programs. I have a teaching degree from Satchel University, and I've taught in the public schools, and I had a music business. They hired and trained teachers and put in violin, piano, and guitar group classes as an after-school program in over 35 elementary schools around the state. Having said all that, I am more qualified to be superintendent of this school board than the present superintendent.
Order. Allow the speaker to finish. Order, please.
Having said all that, I am not qualified to be superintendent because I don't have the right experience. The present superintendent was not put in to improve the quality of education, to follow the science, or do what is best for the students. She was put in to further a political agenda that destroys public education.
Sir, please address the board as a whole and not an individual. Sir, please address the board as a whole and not an individual.
That is Marxist in nature and will lead to the downfall of our nation. We see it happening across our country. We, the people, are not going to follow unconstitutional ethics, laws, or mandates. We, the people, are going to exercise our God-given rights. Edmund Burke said, "The people never give up their liberties but under some delusion." And Ben Franklin said, "Those who give up essential liberty to purchase a little temporary safety deserve neither liberty nor safety." We, the people, will only comply with what is written on my tie, the Declaration of Independence, and the Constitution of the United States. Thank you.
Hello.
Good morning.
My name is Wade Weaver, and I'm a resident of Vito. I have two children and go to Lawton Elementary. I'm here to tell you that we do not want our kids to be forced to wear masks because you think you know better than me about their health issues. On a Thursday. Perhaps it's because you have no intention of listening to the parents. The only reason you'd hold this meeting at this time is because you're scared of what would happen if you held it when the parents could be here to talk. This reeks of absurdity, and it feels purposeful. The least you can do is give the appearance that this is above board and hold this meeting at a time where parents are not at work or dropping their kids off at school.
Order, please. Allow the speaker to finish. Allow the speaker to finish. Thank you.
Further than that this morning, when you whispered into the microphone and pushed all the parent comments to the bottom of the agenda. You did that so that everybody would leave. We know it, and you know it. We're here to talk about the tyrannical ideology of forcing kids to wear masks that will somehow keep everyone safe in an emergency. Well, I looked up the numbers on your dashboard last night. .57% of your kids and employees are now at-home quarantine. However, only, excuse me, 3% are at-home quarantine, and only .57% have COVID. What emergency are we here to talk about? Okay? That means 99.5% are fine, and they're at school doing what they need to do. So the only question is, why would you do this so quickly? Why would you do this the way you're doing it? Well, money, that's why. Did you know that the American Rescue Plan Act and the Elementary and Secondary Education Emergency Relief Fund gives money to schools if they follow CDC guidelines and quote, "Sure, universal incorrect mat-wearing of masks"? Did you know that? I knew that. So I have a question for you. Have you taken any money with the condition that any kids will be universally masked for COVID-19? That's my question to you. Could that be the case? They're not going to answer.
Order, please. Allow the speaker to finish. Thank you.
All the parents who are waiting to speak up, don't you see? They're running scared. They're scared of you, they're scared of the truth, and their only concern about money. Did you hear me? They're forcing masks for money. They sold our kids down the river. Parents, it's time to come together, and it's time to step up and get off your knees. Let's legally remove these petty tyrants who only care about money and protect our kids the way we know is right.
Jessica, you'll be our last speaker, and we're going to take a break for 10 minutes, and then we will come back and resume with speakers. Thank you.
Hi. Hi, my name is Jessica Boroskis, and I am a student at Lake Howell High School. Firstly, I would like to thank you for allowing me to speak today and have a voice. I ask that you also see me as a human being with my own opinions as well as a student. I know that there are many adults in this room who will disagree strongly, berate, and laugh at me for what I have to say, but I feel it is important to hear an inside opinion. I am on the front lines of this issue, and I see it every day. I go to school, my school, every day and see hundreds of children maskless, not having an exemption. Every day, I fear for my health and safety, the health and safety of myself and those around me. I also fear for those who could possibly spread COVID to someone more vulnerable, like the elderly and children. It brings, it breaks my heart every day to hear adults, those responsible for the children, not get them vaccinated and tell them not to wear a mask. Of course, the children listen and believe what their parents tell them. It is not a matter of your freedom, it is not a matter of
Order.
...trying to control us. It is a matter of our safety. If we try to go back to what was normal today, so many more people will become sick. I know that everyone wants this to be over, that's all anyone wants. This has been misery for so many people, including myself, but letting children not wear masks puts us and school staff at risk. This decision is a matter of lives. Students, teachers, and administrators' lives are in your hands. All I want is that you take my life as a student of Seminole County and a human being seriously. The same goes for my peers. I am fully vaccinated, and I will be wearing a mask until this pandemic is over. I am doing my part.
Order. Order.
I am doing my part, and I find it upsetting that others, especially adults, would disregard my safety and the safety of their own children. If things stay the way they are, cases will spike yet again. COVID-19 does not care about people's freedoms and does not care about the stigma around vaccines. If you wear a mask and get vaccinated, you are less likely to get sick than those who consciously choose not to. Many make this decision
Order.
Many make this decision because masks are uncomfortable, but a mask is not synonymous with a muzzle. I walk around school all day wearing a mask in 90-degree weather with asthma, and I do just fine, and others can make do. From my own experience, last year, my pediatrician told me that there was a single case of the flu reported in her office because of masks. During the normal
Order.
During the normal years past, there were hundreds. Masks don't only prevent COVID spread, but the spread of other sicknesses. This isn't to say that masks are permanent or that there shouldn't be an opt-out, but only for medical reasons confirmed by a doctor. The sooner we do our part, the sooner we are able to go back to a true normal. And I have one question that I ask you to think on.
Order.
Parents in this room and on the board, do you want your child to be healthy and survive? Think about it. It should be an easy question with an easy answer. Then why is the solution so controversial? I believe it should be accepted with open arms and an open mind. Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica. Order.
If everybody would hold their applause and stop yelling, that would help a lot.
Okay, so Board members, let's take a recess, and we'll reconvene at 11:30.